All right, Karen, you ready? All right, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Before we start, if everybody would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Karen, if I could ask you to call the role of members.
Certainly. Mr. Brianne? Mr. Cohen? Yes?
Here. I'm saying, I just said, yes, yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Donaldson?
Here.
Mr. Brandon?
Here.
Ms. McHarkin?
Here.
Mr. McTeague?
Here.
Mr. Shekman?
Present.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Here. Thank, thank you. All right, let's, if we could get approval of the minutes from February.
So moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion?
Is that Ms. Scott?
No, Sheri, Sheri made the motion.
Thank you.
And Brad made the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Um, at this point, I guess we'll do a public swearing-in. Anybody who plans on testifying this evening, please stand and be sworn.
Do you swear?
Thank you. All right, the first case has been withdrawn. I'm assuming that we don't have to do anything, correct? Do I? Do we have?
Correct, that is withdrawn, you have no action required.
That's what I thought. Okay, so that case number two, which is UDP S two four zero five seven, disclosures, we'll start all the way down on my left. Jay?
I think I need to recuse myself from this one. Do I need to say anything?
Just state that you're abstaining to ensure that the proceedings are free from any potential bias or prejudice.
I'm abstaining to ensure that the proceedings don't have any prejudice or bias.
You will have to complete a form A-Day and attach it to the minutes.
Okay.
Jackie?
Yeah, I did a site visit and spoke to the applicant's attorney.
Patrick?
I did a site visit.
Sheri?
None.
Brad?
I did a site visit. The applicant's attorney left me a message, but I also asked legal as well. So I have a retail establishment, warehouse, that's a retail establishment within like a hundred yards of this, and I own a lot of property in Victoria Park, but legal said that it would be speculative in nature in terms of whether or not there would be a pecuniary gain or loss for this project. I just don't, I don't feel very comfortable because either way I vote could be looked at either way. That's what I'm nervous about because, like I said, I have a retail establishment that's within a hundred yards of this.
So you don't have to recuse yourself, but the statute provides you with the ability to do so if, just like Mr. Shekman, you feel that your participation, or your abstention rather, would be to ensure a fair proceeding, free of potential bias or prejudice.
So I think, knowing that, I think I'm gonna ask to recuse myself just because I don't want the, even the appearance of bias one way or the other because of the retail establishment that I own. So I'm gonna recuse, and then I'll, I'll fill out a form.
Okay. Please note that John Bronco's joined the meeting at six oh five. We hurry up, we're gonna let you do your recusals or, I'm sorry, Steve?
Site visit and spoke to applicant's attorney.
Brian?
Site visit and spoke to applicant's attorney.
Okay. John, we're on to the second item and doing disclosures.
Spoke to applicant's attorney.
Okay, and I too spoke to the applicant's attorney. All right, Robert, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Robert Lockery on behalf of the YMCA. I'm joined here tonight by, with Cheryl Woods, the President and CEO of YMCA of South Florida, as well as members of our development team and the design team. As you all know, the YMCA, just, there we go, start with that one, the YMCA completed construction of its newest facility within the last year, the L.A. Lee YMCA Mizel Center on Cisthunk Boulevard, and it is, Cisthunk Avenue rather, it is, it is a success to say the least. The, the rooms are overflowing, the kids' camps, the swimming pool, the gymnasiums, the basketball leagues are all doing extremely well. And now it is time for the Y to turn themselves to Phase Two, which was promised at the same time that they came into the city with the, with the Cisthunk facility to construct the facility at Holiday Park. The property in question is property that was acquired by the city in the late nineteen nineties. Many of you may remember it was, it was retail and commercial establishments at the time it was purchased. The properties were torn down, but has never been incorporated or developed in any other way. The underlying land use, as your staff report indicates, is a mix of two land use categories. The western portion facing federal highway is commercial at the city level, commerce at the county, and the eastern area, which is on the right side, is park land use category. The zoning is also a mix, a little bit of a different configuration, but B-one at the northern, northwestern portions of the property and park on the southern portions of the property. This Planning and Zoning Board reviewed a street vacation a couple months ago, that went front of the City Commission last night and was approved, but the property, as you see from the graphic in front of you, is located on federal highway, north of the main entrance into Holiday Park and to the west of Parker Playhouse. This is a rendering of the site plan that is in your package and that you all have reviewed. It includes, the package includes a request for a public purpose approval for the YMCA facility, as well as a adjacent facility that's built within the same lease for the, for Broward Health, a standalone emergency room, which is located on the left side of this screen, just north of the YMCA facility. I'll go through the actual description of what is in each building, but this is the overall site plan. Apologize, this is now turned on its side. So on the right side, you have the north, on the left side is the south, so that's the entrance into Holiday Park. At the top is the west, which is federal highway, and then Parker Playhouse would be towards the bottom. As you see, the building itself is oriented towards the intersection of Nenninger and federal highway. It is angled towards that location, which will provide a new entrance into Holiday Park. There are two facilities on the ground level, including the swimming pool, which you see, a lap pool, as well as a training pool, and then the YMCA facility, which you see a little, I wonder if I can point with this, I don't think I, yeah, I can, there we go, sorry, here we go. The YMCA facility, which is located in this general area, and then the Broward Health facility, which is to the north or to the right of your screen, and then surface parking on the east side of those two buildings. I know this graphic's a little bit hard to read, so I'll just walk you through it. On the ground floor of the YMCA building, which is located on the bottom, you have a community rooms, there are rooms for children activities, for assembly for children, there are family locker rooms, as well as men's and women's locker rooms, to serve the outdoor pool and teaching pool that I described, as well as administrative and lobby areas for the Y. On the second floor is a gymnasium, located up here in the corner of the YMCA building, a spinning classroom, other high intensity and low intensity fitness classrooms that are spread out, and then a wellness center, which is located right here at, this is the southeast corner of the site, which again is the view you see as you're coming into the park, floor-to-ceiling glass. This wellness center, fitness center will have beautiful views, not overlooking the swimming pools that are down below, but of the entire downtown area. Many of you may also remember, I was talking about the YMCA out on Cisthunk, but may remember there was a YMCA downtown Fort Lauderdale about twenty years ago, it was on the west side of federal highway, not far from this. That building was torn down and sold, and it has been a longstanding promise of the Y to return to downtown Fort Lauderdale, and so this is in keeping with that vision. This is a view, this is a little bit out of date, the, whoops, how'd I do that? Can you guys help me with that, or do I? Escape would always work, right? There we go. This is a view looking towards the northeast. On the left is federal highway, on the right is Nenninger, and what you see from this view is the swimming pool area. The ground level of the YMCA is a little bit smaller in footprint than the, than the second floor, which actually reaches out over. The patio area, which allows you to see through into and towards Holiday Park and to Parker Playhouse. This is a view, the kind of oriental, looking down on the site with the swimming pools, again, at, in this case, the southwest corner. The YMCA building, which is the largest building on the property, it's two stories, and then in the back left, you see the Broward Health Building. One of the other things that you'll notice is that the sidewalks are being significantly improved, much wider sidewalks along federal highway, new landscaping installed with new oak trees, as well as coming around the corner in a new entrance into Holiday Park. You currently don't have a sidewalk entrance, you have to actually walk along the roadway. That'll be improved with this area, with a patio that you see kind of on the right side of the property, that will be incorporated into the water trails plan, which is in keeping with this area. Here's a view looking directly kind of from the fence line at the pools and the building beyond, and here's a building, here's a view of the one-story Broward Health Emergency Department, which as I said, is on the north side of the YMCA. The Broward Health Facility is served on the east side of the, of the property, from the parking area. It includes twelve beds. It does provide a full-service emergency room with emergency room doctors, emergency room nurses, on staff at all times. There are no overnight stays, so in that sense, it's not like a traditional hospital, but does provide the types of emergency care that currently, you'd have to go south of the river, down to what I still call Broward General, Broward Health Medical Center, or up to Holy Cross to receive. So this provides a much-needed service in the heart of our downtown serving, downtown Fort Lauderdale, as well as Victoria Park, Cooley Hammock, and the areas surrounding. This is a view of the zoning and land uses, a land use map showing the, the commercial land use on the west side of the property. One of the things you'll notice is that the Broward Health Facility is completely contained within that underlying commercial land use. Most of the YMCA building is as well, a portion of it is within the park space. Both Broward County and the city have, have come to the conclusion that these uses are consistent with the underlying land use. And then here's what shows a little bit different about the zoning, a majority of the Broward Health Building is in the B-one zoning, and then the remainder in the YMCA facility is within the park zoning, as is appropriate. One other element that is, was listed in your, in the staff comments is the setback of the second floor of the YMCA building from the of the second floor of the YMCA building from the property line, which is a little bit less than 25 feet. It's actually 16 feet. One of the things we want to point out that's really important, it's really a unique situation here. I'll go back to the graphic. With the way the street at the, at the entrance to Holiday Park works, in addition to the street, there's actually an additional, about 44 feet between the roadway itself and the property line. So even though it's all owned by the city, we measured our setbacks from that red line. The truth is, if you measure it from the street, that portion of the building is over 60 feet from the entrance driveway. That is an overview of the project. Again, we have read the staff report. We agree with all the staff conditions and the staff conclusions, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. This board will be reviewing this and making a recommendation of the city commission. We know this application will be going along with, to the city commission, and it's consistent with the lease that's currently in place and that's being worked on right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicants, counsel, before we open up to public?
I do. Thanks. So the setback, you're, you, you mentioned that, that there's an extra 44 feet to Sandy Nenninger from the, from the building or from the property and then...
From the property line, yeah.
All right. You're, I know you're looking for a setback of 16 feet as opposed to 25. Was that on the front? Is that front on Federal Highway or is it front on there?
That's on Nenninger. We meet, yeah, we meet the setbacks everywhere else around. So in reality, where we're asking for that 16 feet, the actual...
There's extra setback built in.
That's right.
Okay. Thanks. That's what I was getting at. Then the other thing is, you mentioned there was a second entrance in the very beginning of your, of your presentation. Something about it, that this project was actually, let's see, creating a second entrance to Holiday Park.
Now, if I said that, I misspoke. I meant it's located at the entrance to Holiday Park.
At the entrance, okay.
So it's on the north side of the entrance to Holiday Park.
All right. Thank you. I, I heard that wrong. Then I think, oh, my other question was answered about the parking and stuff. I see the parking, I was questioning how the parking was located to Broward Health, and then your, one of your subsequent slides showed me it was close to there.
Yeah.
See, the, some of the slides, the orientation looks a little different, like that's not north-south, and it was confusing me. Okay. I was thinking they were all north-south.
I apologize. So they're mostly north-south with the exception of the ones that are important, which are the actual design drawings, such as this one.
I got the hang of it. That's good. Thanks.
Sherry?
Thank you. Robert, of course, you're looking for a parking reduction.
Yeah.
And have a lovely study that says you're giving even more that's needed. Can you tell us peak times for utilization and whether there would be any mixed use, not just between Broward General, but also with Parker Playhouse?
Certainly. So Broward, Broward Health's parking demands for this type of facility are not that significant. It's not a doctor's office where you would, you know, where people go and wait for appointments. The biggest demand is frankly the YMCA facility, and those peak hours are in the evening, late afternoon and into the evening. One of the things that we're providing that's included within that parking study, we've got a little bit more than even that, is there is some on-street, or rather, not on-street. There's some parking that currently exists to serve the city's utilities department. They have an equipment room over there, and there's about 25 spaces that are set aside for them. That actually gets added and will also be available at our peak times in the, in the PM hours. As far as Parker Playhouse is concerned, Parker Playhouse, through its lease with the city of Fort Lauderdale, has a license on the lot that is to the east of Parker Playhouse. So its lot is, is completely served by that lot. There's a specific number of spaces that's available to Parker, and that's where that parks. There's also some perimeter parking around Parker, around Parker. But while we would, both uses would typically share parking when it's available, they can each survive on their own with their own parking.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah, Robert, I have a question about the emergency department.
Yeah.
You state that they have 12 beds. I assume when you say 12 beds, you mean that they're going to have 12 cubicles to treat patients, not 12 separate beds for people to stay in?
That's correct. So there are 12 examination rooms. That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
The second question I've got regarding that is, I'm assuming then you're not going to have ambulances taking people to that facility?
Great question. It would be extremely unusual for an ambulance to take someone, and I'll explain it this way. If someone needs, if, if an ambulance comes to your house or a car accident or something like that, they're going to go to Broward General or they're going to go to Holy Cross. That's the practical nature of it. The facilities do exist here to treat patients, but an ambulance is not going to go. Now, what you will, you know, what you will see is if someone comes in, is stabilized, and needs to go to the hospital for an overnight stay, they will be transported. But in that case, the ambulance isn't using its sirens, et cetera.
So you're going to be doing things like lacerations, broken bones. I assume you'll have x-ray and stuff and then you'll transfer them.
That's correct. X-rays, CT scans.
So no real true emergencies like trauma, overdoses, those types of patients will go to the hospital?
If they're picked up by an ambulance, they will certainly go to the hospital. Folks who are suffering from a heart attack, from a stroke, they might go to the hospital, or this would now be available to them closer to them. So that, that is a, that is a possibility.
Yeah. I don't think the ambulance would take those patients there.
The ambulance will not. Right.
All right. Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Brian?
Yes, I think Jackie's question was part of what I was asking about the ambulances. So it will only be ambulances that are transferring patients. So if somebody was in Holiday Park and was having a seizure or something, and then their family decided to take them there instead of to the hospital, they'll get their treatment there, and then they'll be transported when the appropriate time is. So we will see ambulances in and out, but it won't be coming there. So that's why I kind of understand where the, where the unloading site, et cetera, was in the plan.
I'm not going to say that an ambulance would never go there. It would be very unusual for someone, for example, in a trauma situation. Well, in a trauma situation, you're going to Broward General anyway. You're not going to Holy Cross. So in that case, you're always, because it's the trauma center, you're always going to go there. It is, it is those kinds of situations where someone might be having chest pains in the park. They're going to go, probably, they might go here. One of the things that this does provide, that an urgent care, for example, does not provide, is that extra care and complete stabilization. So I know more about this unfortunately than I did two years ago. But I do know that when you're in the emergency room and, you know, they will keep you there, you'll stabilize before they move you to a bed, and that's a situation where at that point you would be moved to a hospital, but it would be in an ambulance that doesn't have its sirens.
You mentioned CT scans, et cetera, at the facility that's run by Holy Cross, south of the tunnel. They make appointments, et cetera. Is this going to be an appointment-based also? Or is this truly just a walk-in?
This is walk-in.
Okay. My next question was in regards to reading the background. It requires the YMCA to give the Parker Playhouse a signage. Have they gone through any of that process yet? Because I'm concerned about the visibility or lack of visibility of the Parker now that this will get filled in.
And the city and Parker are concerned about that too, as is the Y. So that is an ongoing discussion that's already begun. One of the, one of the things that's taking a little bit more time is also getting FDOT approval on it. It looks like we've got that. The way staff address that, and Ms. Parker and I were just talking about this late last week, is we know, the Y knows that that has to be addressed prior to a building permit. So that's a condition that has to be dealt with, and it's just, it doesn't really matter to the Y. It's really up to Parker and the city, and right now under the lease, it provides for that, that all... So to answer your question, all, all parties have to agree on a location.
But will that go in front of a review board, or how will that be determined?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that necessarily it would go in front of a board. It would certainly go in front of city staff at the very least.
David Hall?
Anybody else before we open it up to the public? All right. At this time, if there's anybody in the public that would like to discuss or be heard on this item, please come forward. Hearing is seen. None. We'll close the public portion of this and bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion. Anybody? What do you want? Do you want the script? No. We want, we want to hear from you, Jackie.
Site plan level four.
Site plan level four.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion or attempt to make the appropriate motion. I motion to recommend approval, I move to recommend approval of case number UDP dash S24057 based on the file, the findings of fact, the facts in the city staff report, and based on the testimony heard by the applicant this evening. And the board hereby finds the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report. The board recommends approval of the application is subject to all conditions included in the staff report and any other applicable conditions. Did I do that right, Mike?
I don't hear legally yelling at you, so you got an A+ on that.
So we got a motion, we got a second by Patrick. Any further discussion? Karen, please call the roll.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen? Oh, that's right. I'm so sorry. Excuse me.
See, I'm confused.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman also recused?
Yes.
And Mr. Barankel?
Yes.
Yes. And Chair Wayman?
Yes.
Unanimous, sir.
Congratulations. Okay. Up next. Case number UDP T24011. Robert?
Good evening again. Robert Lockery on behalf of Broward County and the convention center developer, Matthew Southwest. So we can switch now. Escape? See, I don't have the computer. How do I close it? There we go. I can't see that far. That's the problem. I don't have my glasses on. Okay, then go down here. And it's backwards. It's like mirrors. Okay, here we go. And is there, how do I do the full screen? Or do I just, I guess that's asking too much. Window? There we go. All right. Do we need disclosures or?
No disclosures from Parkers.
Good evening. Robert Lockery, as I said previously on behalf of the applicant. The request for you tonight is for a special sign district for the Broward County Convention Center. I'm joined tonight by Robert Dennis with the, with Broward County. You know, we, I, I know you all see the convention center is coming along, as well as the convention center hotel. One of the things that the convention center previously had, and convention centers of this size always include, is a message center sign. That previous sign was a standalone sign that was on pylon sign, typical to what you see in a lot of areas, you know, whether you're down at the Hard Rock or down at Miami Beach or in Las Vegas or anywhere else. What's really unique about this, I think, is that the convention center folks and their architects have come up with a plan that's not as, as, I guess I would say, as, as obvious as having a standalone sign that would be out on the corner. Instead, they've incorporated the sign, the message center sign, within the building itself. In this case, the CVB, the Convention and Visitor Bureau Building that's on the corner. That allows for what we think is a much more architecturally pleasing, aesthetically pleasing sign that still serves the same purpose of letting folks who are coming to the convention center know what's happening there, as well as providing public service. That said, the sign itself still meets the locational requirements that would be required for any other convention center sign or message center sign in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Specifically, it's on a state highway, in this case 17th Street. It serves a facility that seats more than 12,000 people, in this case, up to 25,000 people or even more when you put in the convention center hall itself. And the site, the buildings that it serves, is larger than 200,000 square feet. In this case, it's over a million square feet. So again, the sign meets all the criteria of where you would allow this, but by creating this special district, we're able to do something that's a little bit more unique and a little bit, we think, tasteful. So in this corner, what you see here is, is the building itself. You see the convention center hotel. So at the north or the, I'm sorry, at the, yeah, the north at the top of the screen is 17th Street. Eisenhower is on the left, that cuts down on the left side of the building. The convention center is down here at the bottom of the screen. And up here at the right is the Convention and Visitor Bureau Building that is kind of the bookmark for the overall convention center site. And this is a view of the site itself with the sign that we're talking about in place. And so rather than place the, the sign out on its own, on a pylon or up on the hotel, it's actually located in the structure of the convention center bureau sign. So we think it's a very appropriate location for the sign. We think it'll be very attractive, and it makes sense as the entrance to the convention center district as well as to the port. And this is another view of it there. By creating this special sign district, the, the permissiveness of the sign is only allowed on the site. It's unique to the site, and from, in all other matters, as far as regulations are concerned, the site itself will have to meet all city code requirements. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant?
I do.
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
All right. Thanks. Nice sign. I like the way it's curved around the building. If you can go back to the slide that shows the parcel, the borders of the parcel where it's located. There you go. So the convention center is in the upper right, and then there's, I'm sorry, the, the hotel and convention center and parking and whatnot. The very lower left is like funny area that has a few funky little brewery, beer place, and some other little retail businesses, the very lower left corner. Why is that included in there? Did this district have to go all the way out to there?
It's actually not quite at that scale. So the breweries that you're talking about are actually much further south onto the west. Yeah, this is a lot that serves the, the areas that you see here are the actual convention center areas of the site.
Oh, really? Okay. All right. Then I read it wrong there. I kind of looked at it and I thought that was what that was. Okay.
There is a great brewery down there, but it's, it's down in Dade Beach.
I didn't know where I was, I guess, when I was there. Okay. Thanks a lot.
Brian?
I had a question about the, the amount of lumens, et cetera, that are part of this. Because when you go into Times Square and you see these, you know, similar type of signs, the intensity of the light, et cetera, I'm concerned about the distraction of drivers in the evening that are coming along, and then they're trying to read this sign, and it's a new ticker tape, you know, like outside of Fox News that's talking about, you know, we're all coming in and, et cetera. So can you help me understand if at night what the lumens is, and does Broward County, you know, traffic have an issue with the amount lumens? Or is it going to be toned down enough that in the evening that it isn't a distraction? So that was my question.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. Actually, we've got a little bit of a, of a, we're helped in that way by the city already has regulations on that. And we're asking to, we will comply with all of those regulations. So staff had the similar concern, and our response was, we're going to live with the existing regulations that you have for these types of signs. That, that includes restrictions on how bright the sign can be, the amount of size of the lettering that the sign can be, and the amount of overturn of the sign. So it can't be a flashing or skintolating kind of sign, so.
That was, that was my concern. Thank you.
Brad?
Ironically, with the sign, it's going to be the same luminance as the Parker Playhouse sign that's there now, because that's, that's what's permitted, right?
That's correct. Okay. That's correct.
All right. No, I don't have a question.
Any other questions? We'll open up to the public at this time. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Hearing is seen. None. We'll close the public portion and bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion. And I have the language here if somebody wants to make the motion.
I got a script. I can make it if no one's going to discuss anything.
You want, you want the language?
I've got a script with me. I brought mine this time. Okay. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP S, I'm sorry, T24011 based on the following facts of finding, the facts of the city staff report, and are based on testimony heard by the applicant. And the board hereby finds the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report. Board's recommended approval of the application is subject to all the conditions included in the staff report, and that's it.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion before the vote? Karen, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Barankel?
Yes.
And Chair Wayman?
Yes.
Do I get to vote?
It's a big, beautiful sign.
I'll vote yes.
Ms. Scott.
Would you have to call on me first? I want, I don't want anything to screw this up.
No one, no one put Ms. Scott in the corner.
Big, beautiful sign. All right. We're going to move on to case number... All right, we're going to move on to case number four, UDP-T25006. It is the Robert Lockery Show.
It is. No, he was just, he just came up to do a tap dance and leave. He did a great job. We're waiting for the applicant.
Who is?
Hi.
Hi. I haven't been here in a while. I'm Tricia Logan, I'm a Principal Urban Planner and the Historic Preservation Board Liaison. And we're proposing a very minor technical correction to be compatible with our TDR program, which some of you were on the board when we passed that ordinance a few years ago. So we have our first project that came before you a month or two ago, that's getting ready to transfer their units through a certificate of transfer. And within the code, there's language within the flexibility units and in the racks, as far as the ability to allocate the residential dwelling units. Right now, it states that it's allocated at the time of final DRC, but this would add some language in a few sections of the code so that we could allocate the dwelling units for the purposes of the TDR program at the time of the certificate of transfer. So it's just giving us that ability within the code officially to adopt these changes. And that's pretty much it. It's very simple. There's a couple of lines that are added within the code section. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Any questions for the city?
Just one quick question. That's the first TDR application we got?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes. And it almost didn't make it. There were problems with that, right?
I wasn't here, yeah, I wasn't at the planning and zoning board meeting when that was discussed.
It almost didn't even happen, yeah. And it was the first one after all this time.
Steve, you have a question for?
Yes. What are pool units? Are they units that if a, I've never heard the term "pool units" before.
So it exists in the code and is referred to that way, as the units that are coming from a regional activity center.
From a regional activity center.
So like, the downtown, the downtown area, or the northwest rack.
And it would be for historic only, that, what would put in the pool unit?
Well, this language just says that at the time when units are allocated, that if you're applying for a certificate of transfer, then those units are allocated at that moment, rather than at final DRC. Because we want to ensure that the applicant that's purchasing the units through the TDR program is getting the units assigned in that moment when they're paying for the units, rather than waiting for a project to be approved.
So if I can explain a little further, interim city attorney, Duane Spence. So in your traditional zoning and land use areas, you have a density that determines the number of dwelling units you are allowed to have on the acreage. In our regional activity centers, you have a number of units that we refer to as the pool of units that developments seek to obtain to, those development rights to build their developments. So you'll have a number of units in the pool, and in a traditional development, they will come before you with a site plan approval for, say, 50 units. When you approve it, those units are pulled from that pool and attributed to that property. So for the TDR program, this amends the language to allow it to be used in the TDR program, whereas the development rights of those parcels are recognized now through this process and can be transferred to the receiving sites.
Got it. So they're the extras. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I have a motion to recommend approval. I move to recommend approval of case number...
Turn, you can turn your... Sorry, I recommend, Brad Cohen, I recommend to approve the case number UDP-T25006, and the board hereby finds that the text amendment, CULDR, consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take the roll? Karen, if you would, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Barankow?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
And Chair Wayman?
Yes.
Unanimous, sir.
Thank you. Any communications to the city? Commission? Okay, good. Anything for the good of the city of Fort Lauderdale?
Yes.
Who was yes? You, John? Okay?
Like to congratulate Carlin in her new role here at the city.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations or condolences, I don't know which is appropriate.
Probably a little bit of both. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone? This meeting is adjourned.